Will the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman Edwards.
Here.
Alderman Simpson.
Here.
Alderman Turner.
Here.
Alderman Lesko.
Here.
Alderman Canman.
Here.
Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderman Tylin.
Here.
Alderman Dubb.
Here.
Alderman Griffin.
Here.
Approve of the September 10th, 2013 committee meetings, is their motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Ordinance tabled, remaining in committee. Twenty eleven, one zero four, twenty twelve, one two three, twenty twelve to twenty six, twenty twelve, three seventy six, twenty thirteen, one twenty eight, twenty thirteen, one seventy four, twenty thirteen, one ninety three, twenty thirteen, two five zero, twenty thirteen, two six zero, twenty thirteen, two sixty four, twenty thirteen, two sixty six, twenty thirteen, two ninety six, twenty thirteen, three fifty seven.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
With regard to that last ordinance you just listed, twenty thirteen, three fifty seven, Mr. Dan Long is here tonight, so.
You want to pull that out?
Pull it out.
Madam Chair.
You want to put it on the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Two sixty four, I think we voted on that last week.
Yeah.
Yes, we did.
It was, it was, the amended agenda was taken out, so this is, you might have another agenda there, but it, yeah, it's been taken out already.
Any other items that need to come out, or, it's your pleasure. Hearing none. Ordinance for committee consideration.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty is an ordinance amending chapter ninety, sections ninety point fifteen point two and ninety point twenty four of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to terms and renewal of licenses.
Is there a motion?
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
If we're doing these in sequence, can we do three fifty seven first, which is, uh.
My apologies. Twenty thirteen, three fifty seven is an ordinance approving the reappointment of Dan R. Long to the Springfield Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Is there a motion?
Moved to consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
The Springfield Housing Authority is an extraordinarily important body of local government in Springfield, probably the largest landlord, and they have one thousand units and approximately two thousand section eight vouchered units, and Dan Long is here tonight, fortunately, and he is, has been prepared to answer a question that I'd like to pose to him. The question relates to a Wall Street Journal article that was published on the front page of the Wall Street Journal in May 7th of 2013, and it'll take just thirty seconds to read. The caption for the headline was, "Housing Agencies Push to Impose Time Limits Work Requirements." Quote, "Deepen the President's new budget is a plan that could transform public housing in the nation by allowing housing authorities to increasingly set time limits or work requirements for participants. Currently, government housing benefits are generally open-ended. People endure long waits to qualify for the program, but the President's fiscal year 2014 budget calls for substantial expansion of a nineteen ninety-six demonstration project that allows select housing authorities to set restrictions on residents or try other strategies to promote self-sufficiency. Currently, only thirty-nine of the almost, of the over three thousand nationally-approved housing authorities have moved into that test demonstration project. Housing authorities are lobbying for the expansion. They say the current system doesn't motivate residents to become financially independent, and it isn't fair to thousands of impoverished renters who need to get the help of assistance." The, any, most of the agencies that have adopted this type of approach exempt seniors and disabled persons from any type of time limits or work requirements. So, Dan, my question is, what's your opinion of this type of approach for the Springfield Housing Authority?
Well, thanks for the question. Let me just begin by first thanking the mayor for recommending this appointment in respect for the request of the city council. I've served on the Housing Authority Board now for eight years. As Alderman McMiniman indicated, we are the largest landlord, and we do have over two thousand section eight vouchers, serve three thousand families, pay out nine million to landlords, and have just about thirty-one hundred people on the section eight waiting list, which right now takes about six months to a year, which gets to your question. I think some of the larger cities, and the article talked about New York, where some families are in public housing for twenty years, we don't have the same type of problem here in Springfield, because we're fortunate that we have a fair number of section eight vouchers, where some communities only have a few hundred and are even giving them up. But I think certainly any change in public policy of that magnitude would have to be approved by the Department of Housing and Urban Development, and should they approve that, I'm sure as a member of the Housing Authority Board, it's something that I'd certainly be willing to look at and examine along with the other board members and the staff in terms of implementing some type of change that would limit the vouchers. I think they suggested five years in that particular article, or in some of the projects they have going on now throughout the country, they've limited it to five years, which is something that could be looked at. Right now, in Champaign County, I think, requires individuals to work, and that, again, has got an approval from the federal government to be able to do that.
Requires what?
Work. Work requires them to work if they're going to be in public housing. Again, that's a special designation that HUD has given Champaign to allow that. The Springfield Housing Authority, right now, requires individuals to do public service, and we keep track of that. It's tracked within the agency, and I think it's fifteen, twenty hours a week, I believe, something in that range, so. But getting back to your question, certainly if that was something that was allowable, I'd be willing to explore.
Madam Chair.
Anyone else? Yes.
I just have a couple of questions. What, so everybody, you're saying, everybody in Springfield, public housing has to do fifteen to twenty hours of community service work per week?
Not seniors and disabled.
Okay, other than them?
Yes.
And if they don't?
And I may be wrong, maybe, I believe it's a week, it might be a month, I can't remember exactly, but yes.
But if they don't do the?
It's required, it's documented, it's tracked. Some of them actually come to the S.H.A. offices, do work there.
What happens if they don't do the work?
I think they, I think they require them to pay additional rent, because the section eight obviously offsets the rent, and so they would have to pay more towards that rent.
Then as to the program that Ms. Alderman McMiniman was talking about, you said it'd have to be approved by HUD, but wouldn't the initiation or the, wouldn't this have to be initiated by the Springfield Housing Authority and request HUD to approve such a program locally? Isn't that how it works?
No, actually, the president included it in the 2014 budget he submitted to Congress. It's an expansion of what was started back in, I think, nineteen ninety-nine under President Clinton, so this would simply expand it. There are thirty-nine states that have it now, each one was individually approved by Congress, so it's not something that we could initiate, it's something that would have to come from Washington.
Okay, but for example, if S.H.A. wanted to do that, you could reach out to our Senator, Senator Durbin, or something like that, and it?
We could, we could. Again, in the context of the total public housing universe in the country, we're a small player.
Any additional discussion? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty is an ordinance amending chapter ninety, sections ninety point fifteen point two and ninety point twenty four of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended pertaining to terms and renewal of licenses.
Move for debate?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to put on the debate agenda, is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Alderman Griffin.
Madam Chair, the only thing I noticed in here was, basically, we're moving up to ten business days so they would have time to examine it, to make sure it's not a problem. There was some talk about failure to timely pay the annual permit process, et cetera, that there would be a late payment fee, but I didn't see it listed in there what that fee would be. Is there any way we would know ahead of time what that is that we're?
Can someone from the administration answer that?
Currently in our code right now, we have a fifty dollar late fee we are looking at, and when I say "we," the liquor commission meets on a monthly basis, and we were going through the liquor code, and they were making some recommendations to the mayor's liquor commissioner to present to you to raise that fee from fifty to a hundred dollars for a late fee.
Alderman Canman.
Yes, was this proposed, the changes to the liquor code, was this run by any of the liquor establishments? See if they have any suggestions or?
No, it was presented to the liquor commissioner, as the deputy liquor commissioners, and to the mayor as liquor commissioner, to make these recommendations because of the problems that we've had in the past. Having a postmark date of December 31st for the liquor licenses, the payments to be in, and the license expiring on the 31st, put us into the following year before we were getting payments on the license, which actually meant the license was expired. So by having ten working days prior to get the payment in, we would be able to determine on what license on the 31st would be expired without having to go into the following year.
So all licenses expire on December 31st?
The liquor licenses, yes, sir.
And, okay, they start on January 1st generally, but what if somebody gets their first liquor license in the middle of the year, like March?
It's pro-rated form, from that point to December 31st, all the license expires December 31st.
Alderman Edwards.
So that, I just, so the main reason for this ordinance was so, was for the ten, so that they would have to pay, make the payment ten days prior to December 31st?
So we would know before and following the new year who is renewing the liquor licenses because of the postmark date.
Alderman Edwards.
Yeah, just from a business perspective, now you've got them around Christmas, and a lot of activities are going on, and things are kind of unheld, and you're putting them through the holiday period. Wouldn't it make sense just to change the date, like January 15th or January 16th?
We thought about that, but due to the calendar year changing, the date changing every year, they may throw it onto a weekend, or, so we?
Well, so would the first.
But we, by saying ten days from the 31st, then you're going to put it?
I just don't, there's a lot of activities going on in restaurants through the holidays, and that's one of them, because I'll get to it because I got catering going on, I got parties going on, I got this going on. I just think it makes it tough.
Right.
And I would, I would say, I would be more inclined to move it toward the end of January or whatever, to give these people a break where it's not so hectic in their business climate, to help them out, than to say, you know what, now we're going to push this into Christmas.
Well, actually, the billings for all this goes out November 1st, so they know on November 1st.
Well, let's change it to November 30th.
We could do that. But I'm just saying, by putting a postmark date by December 31st, doesn't give us time to act on if they don't renew the license. I know Joe Davis has received complaints about people that have not paid their license, and they're still operating on the grounds that their license is expired.
Well, you know what, being, not making excuses, I'm not in the liquor business, so I really don't have a dog in this, fight either in this. We're having them renewed right during the most busiest, busiest time of the year, when most of them are making thirty percent of their sales through the December, the Christmas, the holidays and that. I'm not surprised they don't get to you till January.
Well, but their license expires on the 31st, though.
You're not, you're not hearing what I'm saying. Let's make your check January 1st, and then not pay you till the 15th, and let's see if you like it. My point being is, it's busy for restaurants and bars during that time period. It's all hands on deck. If you've ever tried to get reservations for a party or whatever, you can't get it because they're busy. You need to do it back in October, November to get your party reservations during that timeframe. I'm just saying, we look at it from our point of view, it'd be nice if we looked at it from their point of view.
Well, I have had businesses tell me that they would like that billing, you know, to be on the first of November, so they could just go ahead and write one check. What we've done in the past, we've done two billings, we've done a, November 1st sent out a renewal notice to them, saying that your license is going to be coming due December 31st. We would like to know if they're going to renew it, if you are, pay the twenty-five dollars, renewal intent, and provide us with the documentation, the certificate of insurance, whatever, and then we do another billing on the first of December, which costs extra for postage and everything else.
And, if I can continue on, Madam Chair?
Let me, let me tell you else what happens in that time period for these guys. You're asking them to give certificate of insurance, what are you doing with their license if their insurance only goes to like July 1st? You send out another notice to them, or what are we doing here?
The insurance company automatically sends us a notice showing that they have renewed their insurance, if they don't, then they're in violation for not having.
Yeah, so the date's kind of irrelevant here. I, I just look at it from the business standpoint, trying to help them out, and if you've had business guys come to you already, which you just admitted they did, and say, hey, why don't we just pay it on the 1st of November? It appears to me that's what they'd like to do, too.
Right.
Chairman?
Yes.
Well, first of all, as to Alderman Edwards' point, December 31st is just an arbitrary date, we could pick January 31st and say the licenses expire on January 31st.
That's a, pardon me?
It's consistent with the rest of the licenses they apply for.
The other business, the tobacco licenses and all that, all are due at the same time.
Madam Chair.
But also, you said that by stating ten days prior to December 31st, that would not be a weekend. Well, ten days before December 31st could fall on a weekend, it just depends on the calendar.
It says ten working days.
Oh, ten working days, okay.
Yeah, it says ten working days.
Yes, my office works hand in hand with Mr. Oliver to get all of those liquor license applications and renewals out the door by November the 1st. We can certainly include language that would suggest these liquor license applicants can certainly pay their entire bill in full by the end of November or December, whatever the case may be. I mean, that certainly has always been an option, I think, for?
Right.
The liquor license holders.
Or ten-day grace period after January 1st. I mean, I just, I just look at this, if we come in and say, by God, you're going to play by our rules, and here's what we do. Well, you know what, we're business guys, we're busy, it's not just your liquor license, it's everybody else, it's the state, it's the county, it's you. Somewhere along the line, we got to turn to be a little bit more friendly and say, your license is due on January 1st, but we'll give you a ten-day grace period, no later than January, pick a date, I don't care, 15th. It just appears to me, we try to ride everybody, and it's sales tax that are generated for our community, they're out there doing it for us, and I just think you ought to be helping them.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
No.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty one is an ordinance authorizing payment to Gary Brits, an Office of Public Works employee, to settle a workers' compensation claim for case number thirteen W.C. two four two three nine.
Move to consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty two is an ordinance authorizing execution of a settlement agreement and general release regarding Illinois Department of Human Rights Commission case ALS 09718, charge number 2009 SF 87, and EEOC number BA 82496, Robert Horton versus the City of Springfield, Office of Public Works.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to debate.
It's been moved and seconded for the debate agenda, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have some questions about this case, and I don't know if Corporation Council would advise that we discuss it in open session or?
Executive session, and we are prepared to answer any questions regarding this.
Well, I would move then that we postpone this to the end of our agenda, and then have an executive session on it at that time.
Since it's on the debate agenda, and it won't be addressed until next week, can we go into executive session then and just discuss it?
Well, I think it'd be better to go to executive session today because, in case there's some questions that need to be answered in the interim, then the staff would have time to get the answers.
Does anyone object to going into executive session at the end of this meeting? That's a consensus, okay, we'll do that. Do you want to? Will you be able to?
I'll go get the equipment.
Okay.
Did we do a vote yet on?
No, we didn't vote.
It's on, we? All those in favor of debate?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Two thousand thirteen, three sixty three is an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement to extend the cable television franchise agreement through June 30th, 2014, with Comcast of Illinois, Indiana, Ohio LLC.
Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
I have a question. Why is this, why are we just renewing this for, you know, such a short period, less than a year?
We are doing that because Azovar is still in discussions with Comcast over the audit that Azovar has been doing on behalf of the city. It hasn't come to a final resolution yet, and because it doesn't come to a final resolution, it would be best to just extend the current agreement until we have all of that worked out.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Mr. McCarty, regarding that audit, could you give us the range of amounts that may be in dispute with Comcast as far as additional franchise fees they may owe the City of Springfield?
I can't do that tonight, Alderman, simply because there is an agreement between Azovar and Comcast not to disclose anything until this thing is resolved. I think I can probably talk to you in private about that with some estimates. I will tell you, just for some context, that Azovar was successful in discovering an overpayment of a utility gas tax, or a gas use tax for CWLP. The result of that was a initial upfront credit of forty-three thousand dollars for the utility, and ongoing projected savings of fifteen hundred dollars a month for the utility. So they did have some success, they do expect more success with Comcast. I just can't get into numbers, I apologize for that, but would be happy to talk to you in private about that.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty four is an ordinance authorizing a memorandum of understanding agreement with the Illinois Fire Service Institute regarding state use of Homeland Security Grant Number EMW 2013 SS 14 SO1, funding on behalf of the City of Springfield, Illinois.
Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
Just a question for the chief. Chief, how much money are we talking about in this grant?
It varies. It's very dependent upon how many classes the University of Illinois offers to our firefighters, and it also depends on how many that we can schedule to get over there, so it's a, it's kind of a moving target, sir.
So this is just for, to provide a class where the Illinois Fire Service Institute provides classes to our firefighters, and then they're paid, the Illinois Fire Service Institute is paid out of this grant, is that?
This MOU allows the IFSI to bill the Illinois Terrorism Task Force on our behalf, and then we receive that reimbursement.
We get the money for, the training, or the training is provided by the Illinois Fire Services Institute, right?
That's correct, and we are reimbursed for tuition, overtime, and any backfill costs.
We pay it initially, and then we get reimbursed. I see, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty five is an ordinance accepting proposal number RFP FM 1403 with Asset Works Incorporated for a web-based fleet management information system in an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand, six hundred seventy dollars.
Is there a motion?
Move to consent. Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
Question?
Yes.
Alderman Tylin.
Director McCarty, I believe that this is coming in under what you had initially thought was going to cost.
Actually, it's coming in just about where we thought. Collectively, we planned on about three hundred thousand for both the FMIS and fuel management, which you'll get to in two ordinances from now.
Okay, the three hundred is what I was sticking in my head, and that's what I saw. So the one later on?
About a hundred.
For the hundred and six.
Right.
Ordinance three sixty seven, so between the two, you're about right on the three hundred.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Canman.
Director McCarty, I take it, or would I be corrected, these are, this one and the other ordinance you're referring to, these are for computer systems, and the idea is that we're going to save a lot more money than we're spending on these computer systems?
Well, that's, yes, of course, at the end of the day, these are software systems that we talked about way back when we came to the council to talk about buying the building and doing the consolidation, all of the things we needed. If the building is the body of this consolidation, these software systems are the heart and soul of the modern fleet operation. Right now, there's an awful lot of paper involved in what we do, we have systems that are outdated and more than twenty years old. In one of our shops, we use Excel spreadsheets and QuickBooks to keep track of labor and parts, so this is very, very important for us to have the most efficient shop that we can possibly have.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed.
Twenty thirteen, three sixty six is an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of two million dollars from unbudgeted, unappropriated fund balance to be used for drainage and alley maintenance for the Office of Budget and Management.
Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for the consent agenda, is there any discussion?
Discussion.
Alderman McMiniman.
Corporation Council, will you prepare an amendment for this ordinance for consideration next week that will reduce the spending to one million, and simultaneously, I'm asking that you prepare an ordinance that would devote one million dollars towards our police and fire pension funds? In other words, we have to address both our infrastructure and our pension problems, we can't do one to the exclusion of the other, and therefore, the purpose of the amendment next week will be to split this two million dollars and put one million into infrastructure and one million to our police and fire pension funds.
Alderman Bowley.
I'd like to have Mr. Bottom and Mr. Mahoney respond, if you could, about, you know, what this would do to your proposed? Because I think, is this spreadsheet that we received today in direct relation to this ordinance?
That's correct, it's a number of things, but there's about one million roughly of drainage projects, so we could reduce it whatever, you know, whatever amount we get in the supplemental, but it will impact what we're able to do, obviously. There's alley improvements in there, there's drainage projects.
So there's thirty-three individual projects on this spreadsheet that you provided?
On the drainage list, that's correct.
And that's got a grand total of one, one point one seven five million?
Yes, granted, those are estimates, and that's in that ballpark, yeah. There's also, I'm sorry.
Alderman Joe.
Of all the directors up there, I guess my question would be, would he be prepared next week to offer a list that would match Alderman McMiniman's request if it's voted on? Can you, I mean, I'm assuming you've rated these, these projects, correct? The most needed?
Yes, but if you're going to take one million out, we have about five hundred thousand dollars, I think, to clean up where actually the work is going on right now with some of the programs. There's about a few hundred thousand dollars for the worst alleys repairs that are, that are in there as well. Now, those are estimates, so I guess the easiest way would, if you took a million dollars off, we could take the drainage projects off there.
Alderman Turner.
I guess you answered part of my question about how much was in there for the alleys and the other, and so your thought process would be to take the million from the drainage projects? Is that what I heard you say?
Well, these are all projects, obviously, that need to be done, it's just a matter, I mean, I guess we have to pull back on them. These projects, these drainage projects, are projects that our engineers have identified as needing improvements, many of them, we've got several calls from residents in that area as well, as well as many of them are calls that I know mostly Alderman are aware of because there are ongoing issues with some of the drainage problems in those areas. There are small, a lot of smaller projects, but they have a very significant impact in a lot of those neighborhoods.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, a lot of the, I looked at the list, and a lot of the projects that are on the list are projects that I've gotten a number of calls, and they're actually becoming a safety hazard for those neighborhoods, and they really cannot go much longer without creating a much bigger safety hazard and leading to more, more digerous, that would need to be addressed, as well as more funding that would be needed. So it's almost like if we can't continue to put it off and then have to end up spending more money down the road.
We actually, we approached OBM regarding Fund Ninety-Five, which is infrastructure fund, as we all know, and to know what was available in there, and that's why we decided these are projects that could be done relatively quickly over the late fall into the winter, these are projects that could be done relatively quickly over the late fall into the winter and would have high value come on spring next year.
Yeah, there, there are a couple of projects on here that when it, when you get the least bit of amount of rain, the roads become almost impassable and...
I think the council should be looking to see whether they can take the money out of Fund 95.
That's, that was my next question.
Well, well, I know that we've taken money out of that fund before, however, we were told the citizens of Springfield that we would not, that that would be a designated fund for infrastructure. And I'm not even sure, and I, Corporation Counsel would have to address the issue whether or not even that's, is it legal for us to even do that?
I don't think you could, but, without, off the top of my head, without re, you know, researching at, at this moment, but also, I think, before I start filing an amendment of the, I think maybe we ought to find out if the council wants to amend this, why should I prepare something if you, no one wants to?
I would think that's fair, that we, we need to take a vote. Alderman, Kimmen.
Well, we did once take some money out of Fund 95 when, under the Dablin administration, when he was threatening to lay off about 30 or 40 police officers, but what we did then was we, we just borrowed, we put in of language that's saying we were borrowing the money from Fund 95 for that purpose, and it would be paid back, and we did pay it back in a previous fiscal year, or the, completely paid it back under the previous fiscal year thanks to the administr, the, the work of Mayor Houston. And I, but I don't think it's a good practice to, as I think one of the other Aldermen said, or I think it was Alderman Simpson, or Chairman Simpson, we, we impose these taxes for the specific purpose of infrastructure, not to spend it on something else.
Madam Chair.
But I, I did wanna add, I did have a que, question too. So these, these projects that you emailed us, these are all drainage projects?
That's correct, and that's a, a portion of the supplemental, there's a portion for the alleys, there's a portion for the drainage projects, there's about 500,000 that deals with some of the ongoing work that we're doing right now.
So in addition to this, there's alley projects, but you haven't given us the list of those projects. Could you give us the list of the proposed alley projects as well?
Yes, we, we have those, it's for going out to bid on overlay for some of the worst alleys. We ranked them 1 through 5, our engineering staff did that over the winter, and our intention is to take care of the 1s, 2s and 3s, go out for a bid on the asphalt. Our crews are actually working on the rock alleys, and we began that work like, just about a week ago, we worked through the late fall and the winter on those. But we can give you a list of it, yes.
You mean, you previously gave us a list of alleys that needed work on, is that what you're saying, and they were raided?
No, we raided them, we can give you that list. We actually have a copy, and we'll get some copies.
And what is the kind of work that would be, being done in alleys would be what?
Well, depending on the alley, but it's grading and resurfacing, and if it's rock, it's grading and then doing rock work.
And this drainage work, in addition to alleviating some of the things that Alderman Simpson men, mentioned, like the water building up in the streets, would it also alleviate some of the problems that people have with their basements flooding when we get a large, a big rain?
Well, it's, it's gonna depend area by area, not completely, but it's mostly water that sits in, some of it gets in the basements, it sits in an area on the road, gets into their yards, and it just makes, it's, it's a health hazard, there's a lot of issues that go along with it. And some of these areas, it sits there much longer than it should. Some of it's just gonna be ditching, it may be some storm sewer connection, just depends on the project.
Alderman, let's go.
I'd like to have an opinion from Director McCarty on the transfer of the money or the breaking out.
Madam Chair, could I address that, because I'm not asking for the money to come out of Fund 95.
Uh, excuse me?
And I would like to...
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Mr. McCarty, you had your hand up, and I was going to get to you eventually.
Thank you. I will have to go back and look at the original ordinance. This is the ordinance that was passed around 2009 or so, when you increased the sales tax by a quarter percent and the hotel motel tax by whatever it was, for a total of about 5.6 million, that's the revenue we're talking about here. And my understanding is it was to be utilized only for infrastructure.
Only for infrastructure.
All of the infrastr, all the gambling revenue that we've done, the new sales tax that we just did, all of that stipulates specifically that it's infrastructure. I would assume your original ordinance did as well, but I'd have to go back and look at it.
Alderman Edwards.
Yeah, first of all, a point of order here, under Robert's rules, we have a motion on the floor, and we can't take another vote about writing amendments or not writing amendments. And if an Alderman wants some amendments written, he can talk to corporate counsel, he or she can talk to corporate counsel about that, not while we have a motion on the floor for a vote. And those amendments can come up later for a vote, or, or not, but right now, under Robert's rules, order, you got a motion on the floor, and we have to deal with that motion before we can vote on anything else.
Thank you, Mr. Parliamentarian. Mr. McMenamin.
I think this comment is appropriate, the, the motion to put this on the consent agenda, because we're talking about the ordinance in general. If, if I do introduce a, you have a good question, Alderman, let's go, about the, the, an amendment would be to reduce the spending of, out of Fund 95, from 2 million down to 1 million, but the, the million that we had put into the pension funds would not come from Fund 95, would be, come from our unappropriate, unappropriated fund balance of, I believe, according to our treasurer last report, of roughly $8 million. And what that does is it, it, it puts that money aside in our pension, so it can't be used later in the fiscal year for other purposes and, and budgeted in ways that would prevent it from going to our pensions. So I, I understand your questions, and I, and...
Thank you.
Alderman Griffin.
So how's that tied to this ordinance?
I'm giving a rationale for the reduction, from 2 million down to 1 million.
But this is $2 million that cannot be spent on any other measure. Right, am I correct?
It, it preserves the monies in Fund 95 for a future point in time when the city has more completely addressed the, the pension obligations, it's kind of holding that money in, in hostage, that's a good way of putting it.
Okay.
If I may...
Are you going to address specifically this, the $2 million?
Yes, if I may point out, I mean, this ordinance says it's appropriating $2 million from unappropriated fund balance to Fund 95, so we're not, this is money that's not in 95 now, but we're gonna put it in 95, that's the way I read it, is that correct, Director McCarty? And then why does the description say requesting a supplemental appropriation in the amount of 2 million from unappropriated fund balance to expenditure accounts 95?
Could the money come in somewhere?
Pardon me?
That's where the money comes in. It, it's the source, it's the source of where the money comes in, and then they appropriate the money after it gets here, is that, isn't that correct, Director McCarty?
That's correct.
I thought the money from the, that we raised from these taxes directly goes into Fund 95.
It does. It's unappropriated. It's just unappropriated, it's unappropriated money sitting in there.
Right, but this is, the source of the money is still coming, Fund 95 source.
I don't believe that's...
Right, that's just where it goes.
Um, yes.
I don't believe that's what the fact sheet says. I think you look at the fact sheet, what the fact sheet says is it comes from line item 1204, which if my memory serves me correctly, may be a personnel line item. And you're supplementing that into expenditure 095107, 8, 128 million dollars.
Our major object codes for personnel are the 11 hundreds, 12 hundreds are the contractual codes.
Well, then it's not 95.
No, you're, there's a fund number, and then there's...
I know what they are, and you just said they're contractual, that's not 95.
The fund number is 95, the major object code is 1200, the minor object code is 1204, which is a specific purpose. You budget minor and major object codes for every single fund that we have, including Fund 95. So what it's saying is this is Fund 95 is the fund from whence it is coming, it is a 1200 eligible expense.
So Mr. McCarty, on the fact sheet, it says to expenditure accounts 095 is the, is Fund 95?
Correct.
And then 1204?
Would be the object, minor object code.
And then 2306 would be another minor object code, correct?
Do you have this?
It's broken down.
I don't have it in front of me.
It's broken down.
Right.
Yeah, 1.8 and then 200,000, between those two, small object, okay.
I don't have, but yes, it's...
No problem.
090, the first number is the fund, 095 is the fund.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-367 is an ordinance accepting proposal number RFPFM1406 with WJ Scott Company for the installation of FuelMaster software and FuelMaster FMS systems in an amount not to exceed $106,258.59 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Consent, second.
It's been moved in second to the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-368 is an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $553,000 from unbudgeted unappropriated fund balance to be used for the Northeast Tiff Redevelopment Project Fund for the Office of Budget and Management.
Is there motion?
Consent, move to consent.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
2013-369 is an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of an agreement with USA Hoist Company Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $279,400 for maintenance services for Domon Power Plant Complex stack elevators for the Electric Division for the Office of Public Utilities.
Is there motion?
Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second for the consent agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Madam, Madam Cork, I've been asked to hold 2013-370 and 2013-271, are there any objections to holding that in committee?
No objection, but is there, was there a rationale given for holding the ordinances?
Yes, Alderman, our office is charged with notifying all the taxing authorities, and those notices had not gone out yet.
Thank you.
2013-372 is a resolution to provide a letter of support on behalf of Bywater Development Group for its low-income housing tax credit application to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for rehabilitation of the Pine Woods Apartments located at 1665 7 Pine Road.
Move to consent.
Second.